Welcome everyone, I'm going to call the meeting to order at 7:01 for the Chapua Library December 20th, 2022 meeting. We're in person, we're providing the video as a courtesy and we are recording. To the extent that the technology states doesn't fail us, we are also live in the room, our visitors here with us in person, the doors will lock when the library closes if you wanted to come join us in person. Please stand for the pledge. A pledge allegiance to the flag,
United States of America, to the republic for which it stands, a nation under God, indivisible, and justice for all.
Okay, the board does have what I believe to be maybe 10 minutes of executive session that we need to that we'll be going into and then we'll come back and conduct the meeting. So Joe, do you want us to let you know when we're back or are you gonna?
Yeah, that's, that's fine.
We'll give you a heads up.
Okay.
Sorry about that. All right, thank you. I need a motion to enter into executive session. Would someone like to make the motion?
I'll make the motion to enter into executive session at 7:03 PM.
At 7:03 PM.
Second motion.
Brian is seconding. All in favor? Unanimous? Okay, we are in executive session.
Yes, we're going to shift to my office for the session, so I'll lead the way.
Thank you.
You're right.
Okay, seven thirty-three. We are rejoining the public session at seven thirty-three P M. No actions were taken, no motions were made in the executive session. Thank you for bearing with us. Yes. Okay, we are going to accept the minutes for October eighteenth and November fifteenth. Did anyone have any comments on those before I accept those? The comments, okay, the minutes are accepted. We had planned on discharging the Safety and Security Committee. We're going to hold off on that. We're making great progress. But as per our executive session, we still have a little bit of ways to go on that. For my report, tonight is my last full meeting as president. And come January, we will transition. And I believe this board is looking to put Jennifer Feige into president, Pam Moskowitz into VP, Ryan Cook into Finance Officer, and Dana Wu into Secretary. So if that is what we all kind of agree, then that is what we will put into our officer slate. And then we just vote on the slate. So I think that will work really nicely. Jennifer has already been very active on buildings and grounds. Bob has even deferred part of his job to Jennifer temporarily. So she's been very actively involved here, working with the staff in the library as well as on the board. So that should work well. I will bring that back at the next meeting. And Jen, you'll be joining me in the January meetings leading up to the meeting. So we'll have a few meetings with our director. But essentially, I have done nothing that the board hasn't done with me. I don't act unless I have four people who want me to act. And no matter who takes on the presidency, we don't have authority as a single individual. It's the collective whole every time we do anything. And that's kind of unique on a governmental board of this type. So that's something that we all honor and protect. And then there was some conversation amongst board members in terms of our use of different technology. We we we're obviously in email, and that is official email. What we don't want to do is have any kind of other channels of dialogue where, you know, we're texting or having lengthy conversations outside of the email, meaning for physical materials, because those materials are tracked as part of our process. And so if we're conducting business, it's in the email or it's in this meeting. It's in this meeting that we're moving some forward in email, conducting business in this email, in this meeting. However, what's really important, because this is only a part-time volunteer thing, it's upon all of us to contact and reach out to one another and to be accessible by phone, to have those quick conversations. As the president tries to get consensus and see where the board is, it's important that everybody be available and be receptive to those conversations. So more on that next month, but I just want to make sure we're all crystal clear on where we're headed, what we're doing. I, of course, am here through the end of my term, which will be June, I think we have thirty-one days. And so we will also be looking to fill our vacancy and work with lead next year on that. Okay. Bob, I'm going to turn it over to you for your director's report.
Okay, I'll start with an oral report that was not in my substantially long-written report. I wanted to inform the board that the Westchester County COVID transmission has returned unfortunately to high and that masks are recommended in all indoor public settings by the CDC when community transmission is high. That's why you see me wearing a mask tonight, and that's why we've updated the library signage on the way in to indicate that masks are recommended. And we've gone back to posting free masks in the lobby and elsewhere in the library. So I look forward to someday transmission returning to low, but that day is not this year. I need to inform the board that the American Museum of Natural History in Manhattan has a policy of pay what you like for New York, New Jersey, and Connecticut residents. And yet, the museum passes that they make available to libraries are considerably higher than other museum passes for libraries. Consequently, our friends of the library have, at their most recent meeting, chosen not to renew purchases of American Museum of Natural History passes. So that museum will be dropped from our museum pass program unless this board decides to authorize the purchase of those passes with tax dollars, which I do not personally advise, because as far as I'm concerned, like I said, the museum has already paid what you want. So I don't need an official board action, but if you all agree that the board is not likely to wish to pick up that bill, then we'll proceed with dropping A M N H from the program.
May I just ask a question?
Yes, of course.
Like when you're a member privately of the, you know, museum, you know, you can get some member-only benefits, like they have their butterfly exhibit. Was that possible with our library pass?
No.
If that was not available anyway?
No. No, and they're
entrance fee?
Admission, not just admission usually for a group of up to four, although I don't know the precise details, so I say usually. The American Museum of Natural History would charge fifty vouchers, it would cost five hundred dollars. You're looking at at least ten dollars per person or per small group on the one pass, which is considerably higher than the other museums would give you a a pass that could be reused.
So as trustees, we don't usually get into what you buy on this level. This is way deeper than we care to be. You know, the librarians can tell you whether they, you know, whether this, but it sounds to me like it's free. It doesn't need to be a library. It's not, there's not an incremental benefit to having our pass. You can still pay what you want when you show up. So you're not, there's no discount, so to speak. Because if you chose to pay nothing, you pay nothing. So but again, I just don't think it's a, it's not a, we appreciate the transparency of letting us know. And I think for the patrons, there might be language to indicate that it's not that we took the pass away. It's that the pass became universally available to them through the museum directly. So I think that messaging is important when when we have had passes and they will continue to, you know, the museum will continue to allow for our patrons to visit without paying, to somehow indicate that might be nice, but
Yeah, see, I'm glad I brought it up because I hadn't thought of that. We can include that language on the description of the marketing for our pass program.
And I think the other point is that it's, there's also not an access problem with the natural history museum. At least not one I've ever experienced.
Yeah.
That our tickets would benefit.
And to sort of explain why I would bring this granular, really, I'd be glad they see this as a selection choice. But a museum pass program is a really important, popular service that libraries advise and and we wouldn't want to just drop a museum without letting the board have a chance to say, hey, we would actually support the use of your local tax dollars for this purpose. And Shen's down. I can't read that.
Hi, Joe.
It's Henry.
Hello. Yeah, I would just like to chime in. I think I recall that the Friends usually reimburse us for that membership.
Yeah, the Friends have chosen not to for that particular museum due to its expense.
Okay.
And now lack of value.
The lack of value, yeah. Okay, the last part of my oral report. I think we could skip that. And then in the written report, you saw a written report on the programs from the children's room. I wanted to just point out that without having it in front of you, you might not have noticed that we had twenty-six live and six online programs produced by that department in the month of November. And the adult services, I wouldn't have known without reading this report, and I presume you wouldn't have either. The two of our librarians are currently working towards the Consumer Health Information Specialization from the Medical Library Association, and that will reap benefits for our public when they come in with medical reference questions. And congratulations to one of our librarians who is qualified for C H I S level one. I wanted to point out, if you looked at the program reports from our adult programs coordinator, I added a blank column, and that's because the column with attendance numbers is a live figure. But many of our programs are recorded and webcast. And later on, we can add the number of people who attended asynchronously. And the question is really like, that number will change after one month and after twelve months. So how far into the future do we still keep counting? And best practice that I've seen other libraries adopt is just about one month of figures or asynchronous programming. See, and one of the reasons I asked so many of our staff to provide written reports is because things like this in our technical services librarians report, she reports that our Chromebooks and our Wi-Fi hotspots are now available for circulation. This is something that I knew about. I even proofread the the materials that are part of the checkout, but I absolutely would have forgotten to report to you. It's an important service that we're offering now. It's not brand new because we had been circulating Westchester Library System Chromebook. But the Chromebooks are Wi-Fi enabled and the hotspots are a separate thing as well. But if you already have your own laptop and you need Wi-Fi somewhere, you can take it with you. I provided you with two articles from your recent recent issues of American Libraries Magazine. And I think that we have confidence in our selection, our collection development policy, and the challenge procedures. But I wanted to point out to the board that the most banned book of two thousand twenty-one, Gender Queer by Maya Kobabi, is likely to be the most challenged or banned book again this year. We'll find out in a few months, six or seven months, when they run the numbers. If you haven't read it, the Chapacul Library does own a copy. We keep it in our adult collection. Other libraries right here in this system shelved it with teen materials. They're both reasonable collection decisions that I would support depending on the needs of the local community. And in the circulation department report, we see that one of the contributing factors to circulation being back up to ninety-eight percent of pre-pandemic totals, maybe that we turned on that auto-renewal function, and that counts towards our circulation goals as well. Are there any questions for me?
I have a couple. Thank you for all these reports from all your departments. It was really wonderful to read. And maybe we don't need so much going forward because I know it takes a lot of time, but I really appreciate it for this first time out. And, you know, give us that future on board. Like really thank you for doing that. I really appreciate that. So under outreach, you had children's here. Wonderful that Robyn went and went to middle school. And I did want to ask you because I know you went out to the high school and I didn't see that in your report, but please tell us all about that because I know that was so wonderfully received. If you went out to the high school and got volunteers for that, I just wanted, you know, you to
Sure, would you like me to report on that right now?
Okay.
Okay, so in the month of November, I did perform two outreach events that I can think of. One was at the Chamber of Commerce reception that they weren't throwing just for me, but that I was happy to go to and introduce myself as your community's new public library director. And the second one that Dana's referring to was a volunteer recruiting event at the high school that a number, by the number, I'm going to say about fifteen or twenty local agencies were at. And we had set up a teen booth that our teen librarian was using to recruit teens to the youth, typically like a teen programming board, teen volunteer opportunities at the library. And I used that opportunity to schmooze at the other tables and meet other agencies that we're recruiting. So that's what I attended for, and I don't think any teens were frightened away by me, so.
They weren't frightened by your branding?
Not my
All right, so just moving on, I saw, getting here with the adult services, that there was this new book that Amy and our town historian, Dre Williams, put together, and I was wondering, sorry, I missed it. Was there any programming around that, or are we having any programming?
Although there was a whole year of centennial programming, and the book essentially captures a lot of what went on with the centennial program. But have we promoted that there's a book now?
Yes, yes, okay.
Time to promote that.
Okay. We have talked about training among us, and I didn't see anything. I saw a lot here. Congratulations again to not Tanya Nada, who disqualified for her Consumer Health Information Specialist. I didn't say anything in this report in regards to who. I saw some things about continuing that, but nothing specifically about training, like who might have gone for whatever training. But was that in here that I missed it, or just a different category?
Not sure if I understand the question.
Well, continuing in would probably fall into
Training? I wasn't sure. I just, I wasn't sure.
Yeah, I guess we could Yeah, I, I guess we could call training could be something the supervisor does with a new employee or even with an established employee.
Okay.
And we're not reporting that kind of staff-led training.
Okay.
We are recording continuing ed.
Right.
And especially for the professional librarians, they need to maintain a certain number non-training, but continuing and formal continuing ed in order to ma- maintain their professional licenses.
Okay, so maybe that's just something to go forward that we look at specifically, you know, training.
Okay.
Whatever that might entail in your account, okay. With regards to the book then, of course, the New York Times just had a huge thing about it, and I'm so glad you included that in the material. I really appreciate that. And there's one article that you have here. It's quoting somebody from ALA, and it said, having an airtight collection development policy. So I know that's something on Pam's slate, but thank you for that because it is so timely and so important that we pay attention to what's going on nationally as well as here. Last question is I was pleasantly surprised when I got an auto-renew, and I, I do agree, everyone is pleased with how that works. I'm pleasantly surprised. I do see that our revenue on fine went down September with eighteen seventy-one. October, it was five thousand six forty-three, and then November ten, twelve, with that one too. And so maybe that's just the effect of the auto-renew, which I guess started in October.
I think it's hard, it's really hard to judge that. Funds happen differently over different months for different reasons.
Okay.
We haven't given, let it shake out a bit.
Okay, but what I would ask is if we haven't publicized it, I think we need to put a little something, whether it's in the bead glass that goes out with the town. I think that's great. If you didn't, you know, if you didn't know, because you haven't taken, come and taken out a book, you get an auto-renew. It's not on hold for somebody else in reserves, right?
It's the, the auto-renew is a little complicated.
Okay.
And I'm afraid to publicize it because it's wonderful to sort of over, you know, you can, you can, you can promise something and then people come to expect it and they don't understand exactly how it works. People from Chappaqua would check out things and not pleasant, may not get that auto-renew.
Okay.
It's really complicated. So it's, it's kind of nice to have it as a, as a good surprise.
Okay, I was, I had a good surprise.
Yeah. Tell people about it. We have a little posting.
Okay.
It's on the receipts, but I think a publicity campaign could that one.
Okay. Thank you, Bob.
Thank you.
Yeah, I think when we make changes, the more we can communicate, the better. But I do agree that this is a particularly challenging one because if nobody has a hold on your book, we're going to renew it for you. But if someone has a hold, you know, it does get sticky. I just, I wish there was a way somewhere we can communicate. Some sort of note about it because it is sort of something we did that we didn't explain. And even if the explanation is we're part of the system, so we can guarantee that you're not, you know, that your books, whatever that answer is, just an acknowledgement that we've made a change. Might be something to consider for our next newsletter or wherever that might slot in. Even something on the book drop that says, did you notice some of your books might be auto-renewing for you? I, I don't know.
There's a little, a little explanation posted at checkout.
There is, awesome.
And like I said, it's on, it's on the receipt.
I've been taking my books out digitally, so I have not gotten any notice. And I did sort of have a little bit of a concern that whereas in the past books returned. So if someone went in and tried to look for an available book, I didn't have to worry about returning it. It just went back. So if you're auto-renewing on the digital, you might inadvertently auto-renew a book that should get returned to the shelf that I'm not paying attention to as a patron. That's just, I'm sure that that's just part of the, the other side of the give of giving someone the auto-renewal is that someone else can't get that digital material. So now that I'm aware, I'm going to actively return my digital materials because I'm the type of person that when I go to pick a digital, I'm not like, I sometimes reserve, but for the most part, I want it right then to start it. Okay. Did anybody else have any other questions on Bob's director's report? Okay, thank you for your report. And now, Joe, we're going to head into finance. Thank you for joining us this evening.
Okay. Okay, not, there's really not much to report on here. Once again, the financials, or the, the results of the financials are pretty much on track. You know, just in terms of percentages, you know, we are, the, the, this report is forty-two percent into the year, fi- five months. And the total expenses for, for personnel are, you know, a lot less than that. It's about twenty-nine percent. But, you know, we have the pension amount. That's, that's a big number that will be coming in soon. So that, that'll probably bring that back up to, to be par with, with where we should be. Materials as well is at twenty-nine percent of total budget. But that too can be, you know, could be made up as we move along through the year. Everything else is pretty much in line with where we should be with budget. Anyone has any questions?
Does anyone have any questions on the November statement? Okay. So then I'll take a motion to approve the November statement. Make motion to approve the November statement presented by our treasurer. Brian, second thing, all in favor? Unanimous. Okay. On the capital fund, last time we met, we did appropriate some funds to go as a call out, and that change needs to get carried into this capital fund.
Okay, what was that number?
I'll tell you right now with my handy minutes, one hundred and thirty-six thousand five hundred and sixty-nine dollars.
Is that based, I presume that's based on a specific?
It is, Joe. It's based on the Cassisi and Sons' proposal for resurfacing the Southlot and driveway plus an additional twenty percent because we expected additional costs. We may address some potholes before winters thoroughly here. We have to add striping for all the parking lines, et cetera. We left a question. And that was our February fifteenth meeting.
Yeah, is, is this based on, on a quote from contractors or?
Yes, it is. So we, we received a quote and we reserved funds in excess of the quote. So, and I'm just looking for the motion and so I can read it to you. Yeah, here. Motion was made to earmark one hundred and twenty percent of the cost of the resurfacing project. And the dollar amounts, Joe, were one hundred and thirty-six thousand five hundred and sixty-nine thousand in the capital fund.
Okay. I will make that notation and adjustment to the report.
Thank you. And then on the operating surplus, you just put that there as a note to us that we still need to make that transfer, correct?
Well, you don't need to. I mean, I, I would almost assume that even this one thirty-six could be part of that or in lieu of that. There's no obligation to, you know, to, to move anything here.
So one of the things, and I'll look at my findings to share this. One of the things that we always talk about is when is the right time to move the funds? So in a good, healthy year, hopefully we have some surplus that we can then move. We don't move it right away because we have to close down the year. We have to make sure the new tax dollars come in that were well-funded for the operating expenses that continue. But there was a conversation in the past about the timing of that and how it impacts the accounting of the money. And, and there was some thinking about trying to time that and I'm not sure where it was supposed to be timed. So I think we need to relook at the timing of those transfers and try to decide for this board move, you know, the cyclical year is the same. So we just need to peg what is the time. And there were reasons with accounting that it looked, it made more sense one way or another, but it just has to be the same every year. So if I can leave that with you to get back to us with when should we transfer? And that's also, the director should be directing us a little bit there in terms of when is it appropriate to take surplus from the past fiscal year and move it into capital? That's outstanding for us because there typically should be a pile of it that can be moved. So.
Examine that.
Perfect. And then yeah, so Joe will make the correction. We'll leave the pending here. That's fine because we should theoretically have something to transfer. And then we'll get, we'll get back to ourselves on when we're going to make that transfer. If, if, and this year might be the year not to do it, to your point about the incoming large expenses, Joe.
Yeah, I, I would just point out that, you know, there is no obligation to move any, anything to capital from any surplus that might, might exist. I might also just say that, you know, anything going into capital probably should be, there should be some earmark for it, that, some purpose that would, you know, support the decision to move the money into capital as opposed to just padding up the capital balance. I mean, you know, as we stand now, we, there, there's a million, almost a million three plus whatever this additional hundred and thirty-six will add to it. You know.
Right.
There seems to be funds.
Yeah, I mean, we, generally, the library has, you know, what the things that typically come out of that capital are. But to your point, we could get tighter in terms of looking at that. And it might be that we want fund balance as opposed to capital. So what we've done in the past is when we have a surplus, we say, well, we've covered our operating expenses for the future with a new fiscal budget and we're collecting new tax dollars. So the surplus has typically been seen as an opportunity to pay for the parking lot. So we move it into capital. And we have not really been earmarking maybe as aggressively as we could. We could earmark into the capital arguably, to Joe's point, start to look at that money and allocate it even within capital. So in addition to looking at when it might be appropriate to transfer the capital, we also have an additional question to layer into that. Is, is it appropriate to transfer into capital or do we need to keep it in fund balance? Because we have upcoming things that we know we're going to be spending it on and maybe they're not capital, maybe they are. These are additional considerations.
So I think Brian's going to update us in terms of his efforts.
Just handed it to him. So Brian is going to take that for us. We've reviewed the capital fund. If no one has any other questions?
I have another question for Joe that is not about the statement.
Okay, go for it. Now's a good place to say it. Just wondering, Joe, you have an update from the auditor? And we have on the calendar audit report December. So I don't know, did they finish?
Well, you know, I think that they are substantially finished. I know there was one one matter that, that they need in order to wrap up, and that's to get the, what's called the Gatsby seventy, seventy-five report.
Yeah.
From the actuary, and the actuary needs some information. I thought that, that was that that was submitted, but apparently not. I learned, you know, about a week or two ago that they were still waiting on that information. So you know, I had directed Chantel to, you know, pull that information together. I, I think that that might be the only thing holding them up at this point.
Great. So Bob, if you aren't sure what they need, just let's make sure we figure it out tomorrow because
Okay.
Yeah, Bob, I'm available to, to talk if, if you deem it necessary.
Thanks, Joe.
All right, thank you. So we, hopefully everyone reviewed the bills. Did anyone have any, well, can I have a motion to approve the December bills? Pam is making the motion. Dana's going to second. Any questions, comments, concerns? Okay, all in favor? Aye. Okay, those are getting paid. We now have, I think everybody can sign except for Bob. Is that right? Okay, we're, so the, the bank had issues. So we're waiting on your ability to sign. I think Dana, you're caught up in that round as well, right?
We're finalizing tonight.
Perfect, okay. So at this point, we have everybody at this table except for Dana has signed checks on behalf of the library, right? And Bob obviously. Okay, all right, so we're getting there. That's big. All right.
Excused or do you need me?
Thank you, Joe. A very, very happy holiday season and the best twenty twenty-four pops.
A whole year there. Okay, thank you. Same to everybody there. Thank you very much.
All right. I don't think you had anything for us on personnel.
No, I don't.
Okay, aside from amazing developments with the with the professional development. And I think we definitely want to somehow see what the training is. So if we continue to get reports to just make sure and call that what, because I'm, I guarantee in the last month, we had staff that attended a WLS training of some sort that were, that would be good to also celebrate those trainings. Okay. Committee reports, I did not, the, the version that got posted does not have the communications committee. But Dana, I really do appreciate you mentioning earlier tonight about communicating and how you can give things to patrons. And I'd like you to kick us off if you
We had our first meeting on December the first with me and Pam and Bob. So thank you. And we pulled our information from the long-range strategic plan. And, you know, just you know, just quickly, the action items that we're going to be looking at are the facility use policy. Pam, um, which had implications from as we were looking through um, the strategic plan and communications impacted what we were doing with facilities. Uh, Bob was going to report back on most of the items that we talked about on a quarterly basis. We look forward to that. One thing that um, we mentioned then at our uh, board retreat, at a board retreat on this December the seventh, uh, one of the couple of action items after we reviewed the committee uh, report was we thought it would be good to have a trustee video perhaps prepared. We're not sure who. Um, that would be a segment for library news to talk about the role of a trustee and that would help perhaps in our current run-up to elections to sort of explain what the role of trustees are. Um, we talked a little bit about the website amendments and how to make changes to that. Um, the other important, I think, thing that we should uh, remember about communications, you know, what the action, what the strategic plan asked with regards to what the community wanted in terms of awareness and engagement. So there was a lot of information that we talked about and leveraging, for example, what we currently do. So Bob had a wonderful spreadsheet of all the different things that we do. So for example, we currently are part of the town e-newsletter. And so there was a way of maybe leveraging what we currently do, for example. Um, this last one had like Christmas hours posted, right, or holiday hours. But going forward, you know, maybe something, for example, of hey, you know, when schools are closed or snow days, we're open or something like that to sort of time it as well as to piggyback on what's we're currently doing already so well. Um, another thing that um, we talked about just sort of briefly was about the paper mailers. Again, that was something out of the strategic plan and it seems like a lot of people wanted, but Bob had some ideas of maybe doing the one pager or something else or things that were not necessarily um, looking, but we talked about that, but maybe like this is what you missed. This is so great. Uh, just to keep on the timeliness of all that in terms of who the target audience is and maybe a one-page poster would be better. Um, these kinds of things. And um, we talked a lot about the website. So there's that. We kind of put on the back corner some of the consistency issues with regards to logo and making things work more consistent around. Uh, and Bob did send a proposal subsequent to our meeting for a, what do you call them, stickers?
The window claims?
That windows claim, window claims.
Yeah.
Like some branding around that.
Yeah.
Uh, so we can look at that. If there was a price attached to that, but again, whether that's a back burner thing related to that, which didn't come up in our um, meeting necessarily, but we talked after that was whether or not a digital bulletin board, just the way our town has it right there at the corner and the high school has it. Sort of this digital thing that can sort of very quickly, rather than I think that we just have letters, somebody doesn't like manually stick on that. You know, um, other than that, something for the front of the building or something where we could update it quickly. It's very colorful. So that's something that we'll think about. And I think the community awareness and uh, Bob made a very good analogy, which is the elephant and the blind man. So everybody knows the part of the elephant that they that they don't know. Certainly know the whole. And part of what we need to do in this process is to educate about everything we do because we do really so much. And I think um, we're so appreciated in the community. And so, you know, thank you to Bob and the staff for that. But the digital, we talked about the, right, there was a physical reason why we couldn't hook one up or anyways, that's just out there. It's on the um, agenda just to have more community invitation and awareness out there in a timely way.
To add to that, friends has indicated interest in supporting something like that. So.
I would just make sure we're aware of the environmental considerations and that we don't put up more light at night in our environmentally sensitive environment. So.
Okay, well, whatever this district is doing, and we will follow the same rules.
So they, so the town has one large display, which is on all the time and it's bright and I, you know, that's their business. We're more environmentally sensitive on this edge of town here. Um, and I wouldn't want to replicate it. And so it, but not to say it's fine to to look into it. I just think you have to consider the environment too. Um, and um, and certainly for us, we could turn it off at night. We don't have to have it on all night like the town is doing. Um, the one question that I had, which I wanted to raise to the communications committee was around these feedback loops. So last month, we talked about how um, we wanted to do more surveying of patrons that participated in things. We want to find out, are they enjoying the museum classes? Are they using the different things we're providing? And I had mentioned that, you know, that was part and parcel with the strategic plan. And so um, I'm, I'm sort of like would, I would encourage the committee to make the feedback loops the priority because it's twofold. The ALA made that their big push for all libraries. So it's sort of in keeping with the lot, the overall playing in the same, you know, trying to keep with our partners. It's a mission that the library world is on is how do you get that more um, specific feedback from your users? Because you have to remember that librarians, they were the people that you went to. They were Google. So they knew more than anyone else. And now it's sort of flipped where they might not know as as much, but they certainly can facilitate getting access to information. And so the more that they can understand the patrons, the better they can deliver against the need and compete with Google. Um, so those feedback loops are hypercritical. Um, and all of the financial spending decisions we make, you know, to the extent that we can have feedback from the patrons so that I'm not soliciting my friends and neighbors and trying to get a wide range of input myself personally, but it's coming through these very robust feedback loops. So that would mean surveys at the end of programs, a survey on the website. So passive and active opportunities to give feedback. Um, general and program specific.
And as part of that, you're going to help educate the board by sharing the twenty twenty-one survey results, right?
So if the library would like to share the survey results with us, that would be helpful. Uh, and we can do that as part of going through the strategic plan. Um, so the library did this internally, this internal work. Um, so we will, so that, so what we're gonna, we're gonna find time to go through the strategic plan as it stands. But what I keep saying and the things I keep saying are coming straight from the plan. But this particular one is literally the first thing we need to do is we, the whole idea, the surveying that was done by the librarians during that outreach was much more extensive than had ever been done previously, as was anticipated by the entire library world, that most libraries would be doing more than they'd ever done before. But it stopped short of being programmatic. So that's a huge opportunity where we need to put in place the the point of survey for programs, the passive survey opportunities. And then the, you know, what is that? Are we doing an annual survey or are we only doing a five-year when we do our plan? So a whole, there has to be more thinking around how we solicit feedback, when we solicit feedback and what types of feedback we're soliciting. And that all feeds into then what data are you collecting and how is it useful? Um, so if I, if I could sort of, that would be my um, where I feel like the communications could be the best, the the ripest start to make the most progress against the strategic plan. However, I think related to this is, do we have the backend systems and the infrastructure? And I know that um, Dana didn't mention today, but internally you guys are trying to figure out what might support communications best, right?
Yeah, I actually drafted an email to the communications chair to advance the selection of a website for and that email is scheduled to be sent by Google tomorrow at eight AM. I didn't feel like it was fair to hit you with it today.
Okay, so so probably as part of that, it'll be good as part of that selection process to make sure that it supports all the feedback loops that the library should have already put in place and will be putting in place in the very near future.
Well, I think the feedback, I mean, I'm looking at all the ideas that we've had on our agenda and I really don't, I mean, our communications committee, and I really don't see that. I see public awareness. I see engagement, newsletter, social media, paper mailers. Uh, so that feedback one was something there that we missed and let's have another working session on that, Bob and everybody else who seems to feel like this is a programming priority. Liz just said that was the first priority from the strategic plan. So that's not.
I wouldn't say like, I don't think the strategic plan had a first priority.
Right, but you said it. No, I want to just be clear. It's not clear.
The this, what the past, past directors first thing that was supposed to happen is the feedback loops. Because that seemed to be one that we're already doing things and we should be gathering feedback. So it seemed like a of the natural place. And then when you're looking at what you want to do next, you ask your patrons. So that's how it so I actually, I would say it is up there with the top priorities. I'm not sure if it is the number one, but it really the, if you think about the whole theme of nobody was here for this except the librarians and myself. Um, but if you think about the theme of the strategic plan, it was very much a talk to your public. Don't come up with a plan without, you know, make sure that it's their voice coming through in your plan. Um, and that's how we got to the priority of the theater. So um, we had a couple big priorities. One was the feedback loops, another was the theater. Um, and and then the third was almost a deprioritization of anything decor or construction related because the public really felt like they had spent a lot of money and given us a lot of space. And they didn't want us to continue to spend into um, in in that, in that part. They're looking for programs. So that's the short, but again, we're we're trying to find time and schedule time to go through and detail about that entire plan. And if you can get the appropriate internal resources to speak to it, that'd be helpful too from the um, you know, I can certainly speak to the finished product, but the raw details, I would need some support. Um, okay. So where, so do you, are you comfortable taking that back into committee then and it taking?
No, I'm not.
You're not? That's what I was thinking. So.
I don't know exactly what we're talking about.
So I think that's where we, I think that's where we can have a working session on what that really means.
Well, I think it has a much broader impact on programming than communication. So.
I I think we're taking it out of, we're, we're not putting it in committee. We're giving it to Bob.
Okay.
Bob is going to figure out what he needs from us to support him in executing the strategic plan and getting feedback loops. So if you need support, you let us know. But our expectation is that she, that that the librarians will help you with that and that you will be coming back to us with here are some ways we're getting patron feedback better, faster, more efficiently and with more ability to execute.
And just quickly before I add is just that um, on the calendar, we've now added um, two of of events to show our appreciation for staff. One is during National Library Week, we'll do something simple for staff in the break room. And then we also would like to have, maybe as a new tradition, every July to have again a public appreciation for our staff and welcome any new trustees that they could meet staff. So those are two things that we'll put on the calendar.
And I might suggest May to avoid vacations. So assuming that for the July appreciation, we might do May instead of July, assuming that the the public approves our budget and gives us a trustee. Then we might be able to do it.
Um, okay, whatever Bob and Steph wants, that's fine. That's just a proposal for those two dates. National Library Week and then July first to kick off for you here.
And um, yeah, so the July first would, if you do it in May, then everyone's still here. You don't lose people for summer vacations. Um, but you have to wait till after the vote because you don't know who your trustee is until the vote. Okay, um. All right, um. So as I mentioned early, earlier, we we still have two separate committees for safety and security at building and grounds. So if you are prepared, I'm ready to call on you, Jen, for those two committees.
Sure. Um, for safety and security, I think the biggest development is um, continued um, discussion with Chapala Central School District um, regarding systems, uh, security analysts, et cetera. And uh, I believe that the board has uh, agreed to, you know, take into greater consultation um, some of those recommendations. And we'll be discussing that further as we move down the road. Um, in terms of building and grounds, uh, we've had a lot of activity. Bob Conrad's been very involved. Uh, we talked about the resurfacing contract, which uh, is locked in for the spring. Our consultant is investigating the possibility of filling some potholes in advance. Um, we have the mixed job RFP, which um, was decided should get underway shortly with IQ contracting. Uh, that involves the renovation of the toddler bathroom to be in sync with the the bathroom renovation that was part of the children's area renovation. As well as adding the uh, sink replacement in the reference area. We're also investigating a change order and have received a change order um, for fifty-three hundred dollars to add a few additional modifications. We're looking to add a spigot in the children's area courtyard so that we can encourage planting programs for the children. Uh, we are looking to correct a construction shortfall with respect to the four bathrooms at the base of the gallery hallway or walkway, uh, wherein the aprons for the sinks were um, either left off or um, are are coming loose, falling apart. Um, secondly, we, or thirdly, excuse me, we will be a addressing an office, it used to be the assistant director's office, where a wall was left unfinished and will be um, completing that. We have finalized our transfer to the snow removal and grounds maintenance contractor will be making that change effective twelve thirty-one twenty twenty-two. Uh, we had an issue in terms of the wood whacker damage to a window in the cha- children's area that's being addressed um, by netting out the billing uh, as part of the December finalization of that prior contract. Uh, Bill Link, our consultant, has provided an updated RFP for a design proposal um, relative to addressing the facade and various elements of the library. We, the trustees are reviewing that, the committee's reviewing that, and the trustees will be reviewing that uh, for consideration of any modifications needed before we send that out for bid. Um, Bob Conrad, our director, and I had a facilities review with Bill Link um, and talked through a number of repairs needed, maintenance um, under consideration. Uh, but I feel pretty good about all of that. Bob, you may wish to speak about the um, AV equipment as well.
Yeah, but before I do, I'll say that during that facilities tour with Bill, um, he proposed the need to have basically all of our uh, most expensive equipment assessed so that we would have a long range. so that we would have a long range plan for replacement of HVAC system, boilers, fans and things like that, of that nature. And then the AV needs of the room that we're sitting in, because we do want to ramp up programming in here and we're about to lose, we had Newcastle Media as a tenant and we were getting a number of programs performed, produced, let's say, rather than performed. As in lieu of rents, well, we need to now pay for the production of those programs. So the equipment needs of the rooms have already been assessed. We're waiting on the report from the company that did it and I'm expecting it by the end of this week. And we have a January twelfth live author reading in this room. And so that's kind of our target date to make sure that everything is up and running with the sound, lights, sounds. I won't say costume, wardrobe and makeup, light, sound, podium and connecting to the laptop for the PowerPoint presentation should all be in place by January twelfth, so.
Just to follow what Joe was saying about the surplus and having capital, the one point three million that we have, earmarked for blah, blah, blah. Maybe in that five year planning of the HVAC and all those kinds of scheduled replacement or whatever. I mean, that is not just things that, you know, the boiler goes out, but just like maintenance, right? With a view of what that maybe we can, knowing what he just said about earmarking, have that as a priority. And also, since you know you have the, what might have to happen on the AV side in this room?
Yeah.
I, I didn't realize that we were reaching out and getting a proposal. I would love for us to also talk to the school district and the, some of the, there's a club, I think, that's been active trying to help the school theater. So I just want to make sure that everyone's talking and if there's any efficiencies to be had.
Proposal for the AV upgrades in this room. Again, so far as I know, the work's already been performed, we're just waiting on the report to come in. So the assessment's already happened last month before I was hired. But the, the report is delayed. And the, that assessment may have been done by Newcastle Media. I'm not clear and I apologize.
Okay, my understanding was that Carrie had one vendor come in and she did not want anyone to meet with her, with the vendor. So I don't know, it didn't seem like a, it seemed like Carrie needed the vendor. I'm, I'm not sure where we go with that.
Okay, once I have their report, I think I'll have a much better understanding of what the next step is.
Sure.
It may be that, that their report gives us everything that we would need to know and move forward. Or it may be that it leaves many questions unanswered, in which case we would seek to have our own report.
Okay, yeah, I know, we didn't pay for a report and neither did Martha, so.
That would explain why.
So, so I don't, I don't know, you know, I'm curious what it is we're waiting for. And I also think that while we're waiting, there's other people. If we're actively, if this is actively on your plate, there's other people you should be talking to as well.
Okay.
Just to make sure that, again, if they're purchasing the same thing, we're about to purchase maybe the book we've, you know, provided more, who knows? So let's make sure. And I don't know, Andrew Lennon might have some insight from the school district because he might be getting, I mean, he is getting the same question. So he might have done some of the research too that would be helpful for us, I don't know.
Okay. Well, one brief point that will come out of the assessment is a list of all the equipment we have. And that's something any analyst that we speak to going forward would require, so that will be a good takeaway.
Right, if, yeah, I, I'm pleasantly surprised that there is a report because we didn't pay for anything. So this seems like it's a, a nice bonus that we'll get something to move it forward, that's great. All right. Did you have anything else in your report or incomplete? Okay, did you have any further comment on the building some grounds?
No.
Okay, policy, Pam? I didn't see the.
No, I just realized that they're not in there. So, okay. So they will have to be sent.
We can talk about it at the retreat, so most of us, the thought of us at least, know where you had a tail of progress.
Um, no, I will say that the attorneys have got, they have given back the trustee training and the facility's usage. And they're, they are ready to be voted on. They gave us extensive information about video conferencing and I will pass those around. I apologize, I, I, I had sent it in, sorry. And at this time, I'd say that Jan, January, we are hard at work on the facility's usage. And that's really getting all of policies attention right now. So we can get programs back up and running and working closely with that one.
It's probably one of the more complicated policies, most in need of extension, extensive revision. Is that fair assessment?
Very fair.
Well, we were closed for two years and prior to that, we knew we needed to get to it, but didn't. So now it's very much a pressing priority as everybody wants to come back out and engage with us here in the library. So Bob, can you make sure that in our next packet, we give you the, the, what do we call the remote?
Remote participation.
Remote participation policy and.
And the event that would be added with the video conferencing as well as the trustee training.
Whoa, whoa, whoa.
Yeah, the trustee training and the remote, remote participation policies. So those.
For, for adoption at the January meeting.
Yes, those are, those are lawyer reviewed, so those should go in the packet without any kind of delay for the public to.
Okay.
Okay, we are up to budget, Brian.
Bob and I had a discussion, he's going to begin, he's updated at the end of this month and he's going to begin the preliminary budget in mid-January, we're going to be, correct?
That's right. Usually what I'm accustomed to is my budget process begins, I want to know what the cap, tax, cap limits are. And a lot of the figures that fall into place, like the estimate for employee pensions and workers' comp, they come, they become available right at that time anyway. Of course, ninety percent of the budget is typically staff salaries and wages, which. I, let's just say that we'll know more in January, so we'll really dig, dig deeper into it then. In the meantime, what I'm trying to learn is where a changeable version of the budget exists. Right, I have a download.
Oh, editable.
The same, yes, an editable, thank you, that's exactly where I.
I was thinking.
I download PDF.
We have Excel.
Oh, we do.
Yeah.
I need that. Thanks, John Hill.
Just have to come to our board meeting to ask for it apparently.
No, I.
Okay, we'll get that for you. What I, so does that mean that in general, you've reviewed the budget and the budget that we have been putting forth is generally what you're?
I would not have accepted this position if I hadn't looked at your budget closely then and seen that it looks strong to me and also almost line by line or section by section, similar to what I've administered in the past.
Yeah, I mean, it is similar, but it's in their old libraries that we prepare with our neighbors too, so. But I'm glad that you're confident that you can deliver against that. That's awesome. All right, so I know we had had some conversation preliminarily, trying to figure out options for training. I just wanted to mention that that may have budget implication ultimately, so we look forward to hearing more on that, we'll set up time separately for a work session.
We're not setting a double, so I think it will, it won't break the pledge.
Well. Yeah, okay, I didn't, I meant more from like your hours that you're, you're paying salary versus. Anyways, it's, all right, so did you have an update on the treasure search?
Yeah, we had a good meeting with an additional candidate where we should get a formal proposal.
Okay, and we only have one candidate right now.
So far, we only have one, and he asked Chuck how to give him some materials right away.
Okay, are we, so.
We have a poster up in the lobby, so that's actively advertised.
It's on the website and it's also on the. So, and in town it has some.
He did our job, okay. Great, then I apologize, you need to be recognized? Yes, please. Do you know when we're likely to receive a proposal?
He didn't give us a formal timeline, that I would think within days, it seems like he, the, the information he was asking was pretty specific. He wanted us to copy the way our budget looked like and so. With the idea being that the transition would be pretty seamless.
And our motivation mainly was because Joe had voiced, right? He's okay with hanging out a little, like, we didn't ask him, but.
Joe's been very helpful.
Okay, okay, it's a transition, I just, yeah.
He's hoping to spend more time in nicer weather.
Yeah, okay, so that's good. We want to respect his desire to. Move on.
Okay, if there's nothing further than I would. Yep, then I would love to ask the public to raise hands now if you would like to make a public comment.
Hi, Melanie. I wanted to share good news that the junior's program with the garden club what just received on Monday, the notification that the grant was approved. And then we got a little better news, Donna, that the, the book Fair for has also donated an extra five hundred dollars to the program. We're going to plant with that, so we are excited not just to have the, the funds for the first grant, but an expansion and to think about books that we can be getting and a way to increase the programming. So we appreciate that friends had purchased the plants for the tenure last year and then we'll be able to expand the, the amount of planting that we did.
I'll do a spigot.
This is going to be right by the wetlands, so by the retention basin. So actually, the kids do like to go out with a little water in, but it's not necessary. It's more fun, they love water, they can mud.
Well, that's a great program and we really appreciate, did you offer the grant proposals?
So it was Karen basic, we did, we're rounded together. I, I did the plants and the pricing and then we'll find a plan for that. But it was really was Karen basics idea for that and, you know, she is just so. And with her background in education, that's a great thing.
Is she still active at the high school? Because she hadn't started that, I don't know, with McSee Wetzel, you know.
So the native plant garden at Greeley, Karen was on the garden team. We've all done, you know, some work with initial planting and about the maintenance on that. There is a garden club committee that works on that.
I think that's great.
Thank you, it's, it's really, really nice when everything works out and external people recognize the value of what we're doing here. So really hats off to everybody involved in that, that's amazing.
Thank you.
Congratulations to Bob too, because that's a great program under Harvard.
Good collaboration. Little minor caterpillars next year, you know, we hope to get them back and, and to have more. So it is exciting, even though of course it's going to be a while before we actually do anything other than think about what we'll be doing. Finding out in December, it's, it's great, but at the same time, we have to be patient.
Yeah, no, we, we appreciate it. And, and I actually, you know, I think one of the reasons we moved public comment to the beginning of our meeting was for the friends because we felt like making you wait till the end of our meeting didn't feel appropriate to our, you know, most important ally here. So I think in the future, I might actually put the friends on the agenda if you let us know.
It's good to hear what's going on too. I have to say that one of the reasons I wanted to be here in person rather than just another Zoom meeting is that I feel despite the high, the high categorization now, it's just good to know what's going on too, you know. And it's good to move forward with that too. So I'm happy to be able to fly on the wall and sit over here.
Thank you.
Thank you. Little caterpillar on the wall.
Well, thank you, everybody. I know we're deep into December and everybody probably has lots of other stuff to do too, but I appreciate everyone's dedication and efforts here. Would somebody like to make a motion to adjourn us?
I'll make a motion to adjourn.
I second, okay, Ryan made the motion to adjourn at eight forty seven PM and Dana seconded all the favor, I, the meeting is adjourned.